Good evening and welcome to the April 8th, 2019 Mayor Council Work Session. Tonight, we have one item on our agenda, but before we get to it, we have two announcements we want to make. First, the state of Maryland experienced a tremendous loss yesterday with the passing of Speaker Michael Bush. Today, we issued a statement. I'm going to read the statement. "The Gaithersburg City Council and I, along with the entire Gaithersburg community, join all Marylanders as we mourn the passing of Maryland House Speaker Michael E. Bush. Our heartfelt condolences are extended to his family, friends, and colleagues in the General Assembly." House Speaker Michael E. Bush was elected to represent the Annapolis area of District 30 in 1986 and as leader of the House of Delegates in 2003. The longest-serving speaker in Maryland's history, Bush was a dedicated public servant who championed passage of policies that benefited all Marylanders. He worked tirelessly to pass laws to protect the environment, increase school funding, support parks and recreation, and improve health care for thousands of Marylanders, among many, many, many others. Mike Bush will be sorely missed by all who knew him, but his efforts on behalf of all Marylanders will be remembered for generations to come." And if we can have just a quick moment of silence, that would be great. And we have one formal announcement. I'm going to let Councilmember Wu read that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Notice to the general public is hereby given that the budget public hearings have been rescheduled from Monday, April 15th to Monday, April 22nd. The following items will come before the mayor and city council. An ordinance to adopt the city budget for fiscal year July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2020, and levying an ad valorem tax on all assessable property within the city of Gaithersburg, Maryland, and constant yield tax and a proposed property tax increase for the city of Gaithersburg for fiscal year 2020. For more information, including the agenda, visit the city's website or contact the city manager's offices at (301) 258-6310.
Thank you, Rob. So tonight, we have a presentation regarding the pending I-270, potential widening, the public-private partnership, and other work relative to the project. We are very, very honored and grateful to have the time of Secretary of Transportation Pete Ron, who's here, and Greg Slater, who is the administrator for the State Highway Administration. I'm going to let you guys take it over.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. It's our pleasure to be here with you. We appreciate the opportunity to present to you an overview of the program that's been labeled the Traffic Relief Plan. I think that's a horrible name, but, you know, marketing experts came up with it, and that's what we're stuck with. But the Traffic Relief Plan is really a systematic approach that recognizes that we have to deal with a system of systems. And with Maryland's problems with congestion that have been building for decades, a piecemeal approach is not going to work. And so what is before all of us is the concept of a program of improvements to I-270 and I-495. So we'll give a program overview here. We also will give a status update on our NEPA activities and answer sort of the question why of P-3. And then lastly, something that we're very excited about, and that is what are the benefits that can be associated with this for workforce development, economic development opportunities that can go along with this? So let me jump into the overview here. And I prefer to do this a little out of order of the slides, if you don't mind. The information is in here, but it makes more sense to me if we talk about, you know, what is it that we have been looking at? What has it been that we've been dealing with? And then I can go into what are those corridors and where the NEPA is currently ongoing.
Secretary, do you mind defining NEPA for the people who don't know the acronym?
I'm sorry, absolutely. So that is the National Environmental Policy Act, therefore the acronym NEPA. And it is the process under which programs, projects, I should say, have to be evaluated for its impact on the environment, its federal law, and if any federal dollars are going to be involved, then you have to have a study of some level. The approach that is being used on TRP is the highest level of review, which is an environmental impact statement or study, and it is an EIS, so if you hear us refer to EISs, and that is the highest level of study that's required within the NEPA Act. And therefore, we are approaching this with the most scrutiny that can be applied to a project. And we are looking at this, again, as a program, so that the existing NEPA study that is ongoing, we'll be looking at the areas of three different projects within that. So what we are looking at, if I could ask you to flip over to page five, that's where I like to start. And what we're looking at here is the future of the performance of I-270 and I-495. These projections are looking at 2025, right? Six years from right now. And what we are seeing is that a huge portion of the Beltway and on I-270 are black. And so what that means is that the expected travel times within those areas during peak hours would be zero to 15 miles an hour. I know often, for periods of time, people would probably like 15 hours, but it is, I think, a choking experience for us to deal with this traffic. And it's only going to get worse. So the impacts of this are not just the frustration to individuals having to commute to their jobs, or doctor's appointments, or schools, or anything else. What we are seeing is that the level of congestion that we already experienced today, that we project to occur here in just six years, are impacting people's quality of life and economic opportunity. Because of Waze and Google Maps, we have neighborhoods that are adjoining, and actually, sometimes a fair distance from these interstates, that are seeing traffic coming down residential streets, driving in front of schoolyards, in front of parks, in front of homes, that had never been intended to see the kind of traffic that the algorithms of these apps are sending wherever they can identify, you know, a path to get around congestion. So when you look at the maps that we see, you see this bleeding over from the interstates and seeing how this congestion is just enveloping neighborhoods that are adjacent to it. And that's a quality of life, not just for the drivers, that's a quality of life of people's neighborhoods with that traffic that's within it. I was speaking to someone last week who was telling me that Waze took them through a grocery store's parking lot to get around traffic. So, you know, Waze is a wonderful program unless you are subjected to the impacts of it as we are within this region. Jumping ahead, this estimate of peak hour congestion increasing 70% by 2040. Now, I know 2040 sounds like a long time from now, so 21 years in the future, 21 years ago was 1998. I don't know about you, but 1998 doesn't seem like that long ago, and it's going to be here sooner than you expect. You all are probably familiar with the tanker truck that overturned on the American Legion Bridge and blocked that roadway for about 12 hours. That created congestion based on SHA's calculations, an increase in congestion of 50%. That congestion experienced from that event was only 50%. By 2040, we're saying that congestion is going to be 70% worse than it is today. So if you liked what you got to deal with, with the tanker, it's like, welcome to maybe 2035, because that's what it's going to look like if we don't do something. Our numbers show that just on the Maryland side of the national capital region, congestion is costing motorists on our side of the Potomac about $1.3 billion annually. That's from the value of their time, that's the value of the fuel that's used, and their vehicle costs. So that's annual, every single year. The longer we put this off, the more we're going to see those impacts to the economy. So the last point here that I would like to emphasize is this figure that says travelers on the corridor today regularly experience delays of triple or quadruple the free-flowing travel times. So another way to say that is one-third to one-quarter of the posted speed limit is what people experience today. So now I'd like to have you go back to page four and to understand what these corridors are that we are dealing with. So this program is I-495, I-270, and it includes over 70 miles of centerline interstate highways as a corridor. It runs from Frederick at I-70, and it comes down to the split and the Beltway, and then on the Beltway from the American Legion Bridge on around to the Woodrow Wilson Bridge. The NEPA process that we are working on, and you can see the difference in colors represented on this map, is I-270 from I-370 down to the Beltway, the American Legion Bridge, which includes the American Legion Bridge, on around to just west of Maryland 5. The reason for that, there's two things. The piece from I-370 up to Frederick is of a different character than the rest of the corridors that we're looking at and will require a different NEPA study. That study should have a notice to proceed sometime this month to undertake the environmental study going north to Frederick. On the south end of this route, we are going to have to closely coordinate with the Virginia DOT in how we are going to address the Woodrow Wilson Bridge. What you can see from this map, and you see the darker dashes at the bottom on the Virginia side, that is where they do not have express toll lanes. So they will have to undertake a program to construct those lanes and meet up with ours and come up with an approach for the Woodrow Wilson Bridge and how we can address that. It's going to require more study. We are already in communications extensively with Virginia and the Virginia DOT in these efforts. They are very pleased, especially about the American Legion Bridge, but they are pleased that we will have a system that will operate around the Beltway. The NEPA work that is ongoing is being run in parallel to the P-3 procurement. So it means that there is work going on for environmental study as well as then the work in working with the P-3 developers and concessionaires. And the reason for that is, again, 2025. We are looking at a date that is not far off for us, and if we do this sequentially, I would venture a guess that we would not have anything to take out to the P-3 community until sometime in 2022. And at that point, we would be at the very leading edges of it and would not have an opportunity to deal with I-270 or the rest of I-495 within any type of coherent timeframe. So the need for this to be run concurrently is that, there is a sense of urgency there on our part. We believe there is a sense of urgency for much of the public about needing the issue of choking congestion to be addressed with.
Anything missing points on there?
I could just add that what you'll be seeing this summer is really the first public coordination outreach for this second phase of NEPA. We did a lot of pre-development work after January. We're starting to kind of bring in that stakeholder group form that, so we'll be out in the summer with that first outreach effort, and we'd love to have you at the table with us as we move forward in that second phase, kind of moving up I-270.
We look forward to that.
And we'll talk about when that should occur. So under P-3, I am going to probably jump ahead as well. So I'm on page six, and why P-3? We do not have the resources available to undertake this as a typical state project. We don't have the resources available to undertake this even as a program within the Maryland Transportation Authority. They do not have the resources, we don't have the resources, neither of us has bonding capacity that can incorporate this, neither of us has enough revenue to provide the coverage ratios that would be required by bondholders. So for us, there are many that have said they'd rather have transit rather than highways. I am very sympathetic to that, however, we have no resources for either of those. And so the choice for us is really not transit or highways. The issue for us is we use public-private partnerships and express toll lanes, or we do nothing. Those truly are the options. And it's sort of a harsh reality that that is what we're having to look at, but it's what we are facing, given the resources that we have available to us. As we look at a P-3 program, given the amount of congestion that we have on these corridors, it's a great deal of interest to the P-3 world. We are having concessionaires slash developers who are coming to us from literally around the globe. And we have structured the procurement so that we can get the greatest benefit out of that global interest. What we have done is we have established five goals of the program. Number one is reducing traffic congestion along I-495 and I-270. Number one goal is to deal with that. The next goal is to minimize impacts to the corridor. And that's representative of not only neighbors to the corridor, but to the corridor itself and the traffic that's going to have to be driving in the corridors while they're under construction. We will be looking for those proposals that have the least impact in those areas. We are looking for accelerated delivery. We don't have the time to allow 10 years for construction. We are attempting to address 2025. That is what's in our target, and that is what we are attempting to address. We have said that we are pursuing shockingly innovative approaches. What does that mean? Because that's very ungovernment-like speech. But we are looking at shocking innovation from the approach that we are using to approach the P-3 industry. We are looking for shockingly innovative approaches to limit the impacts to the adjoining areas, and we're looking for shockingly innovative ways to deliver this project faster. And what we have said to industry is that we will clear a footprint, and then we will give them these goals, we will establish those parameters that will be necessary for them to be able to make decisions, excuse me, and we will give them those parameters. But we're not going to tell them how to do the job. So what we are doing is allowing them to bring their experience from literally around the globe to benefit us within these corridors. And it is a very innovative approach. It's an approach that you witnessed on I-270 with the Innovative Congestion Management Project, in which we told contractors, you have, and designers, we've said, "You have $100 million. Start at the Beltway, go north. Whoever can move the most vehicles the farthest to past this gets the $100 million and is expected delivered quickly." We had six teams compete for that, two with international components within those teams. We should be seeing the full implementation of that procurement here this fall, and then we should be able to see the reward of having invested that money. Our modeling was showing a 30% reduction in travel times from Frederick to the Beltway in the AM peaks. That's a lot of benefit for $100 million. It's that concept now writ large on I-495 and I-270 that's going to be used within these corridors, again, making sure that we have the parameters that guide, but giving a great deal of innovation. And then the last is the goal, which has, this has to be done at no net cost to us. And that's recognition that we don't have the money to be investing in these corridors, yet those corridors are incredibly important to the region. And we are going to be requesting express toll lanes that will utilize congestion pricing in a way that ensures that these lanes don't simply fill up again with more traffic. I've heard a number of comments about induced congestion, whenever you add lanes, you get more cars. Well, that's only an effect if you're not growing. The fact is, we are growing. We're going to see in excess of a million and a quarter new residents in the next 20 years within the national capital region. There will be more cars, whether we want them to or not. And of course, the idea that says that adding a lane just brings more cars, well, if that were true, the opposite of that would be if we take a lane away, we should have less congestion. I don't think that'll prove out either. So we also are looking for ways that the P-3 program can enhance transit, and we are looking at ways that public agency transit vehicles would use the express tollings. We would view it no cost, but we're not sure until we get proposals in as to what a tolling structure would look like. And we have also said that depending upon the way that this project will work with, we are anticipating concession fees. A concession fee is something that the developer pays upfront at financial close to the state. And, sorry, I've got a sneeze that's in there wanting to come out.
It's allergy season. Allergies, kill me too.
Yeah, I noticed my car's got the film on it already. So, again, I'm jumping ahead, but the way this is structured is that we know we have areas that will be very productive for, very productive for tolls, and other areas, thank you, other areas that are going to need gap funding, meaning the tolls will not produce enough money to pay for the construction of that roadway. Pretty good example of that is I-270 from I-370 north to Frederick. Right? There's a lot of congestion there, but the overall volume of traffic is not great enough to pay for that construction. So we know we're going to need to have enough coming out of concession fees from other areas to pay for the gap funding that's going to be necessary for us to continue that construction. And so what we are saying is that, once we can get to this no net cost, that then would provide us an opportunity to see what additional funds are available, whether that's from a shared revenue over a period of time, or whether there's an actual cash upfront investment that could go into the CCT, as an example. Or in Prince George's County, there's a desire to connect to TOD developments that they want to encourage, and which we can connect to those. So we are looking at more than just the highway, but we also recognize that we are in the process of building a purple line at a cost of $5.6 billion over a 36-year period. We also just made commitments to WAMADA, in which we will provide them an additional billion dollars over the coming six years. So we are investing in transit, but we need to do something about highways as well. The concept of an express toll lane, if anyone has been on I-95 north of Baltimore, we have express toll lanes that have a simplified approach to congestion pricing. It's during peak hours, they're the more expensive toll than non-peak. And they run adjacent to the roadway, and our calculations from studies that have been done have shown that the express toll lanes have reduced congestion on the general purpose lanes by 12%. So even if you choose to stay in the general purpose lanes, which we have committed, are going to remain free. If you drive on lanes that are free today, they're going to be free after this program. But you will benefit from the express toll lanes because that traffic in it is not in your lane. And the way that we will ensure that those lanes are remaining free-flowing, or 45 miles an hour, or sort of an approach, will be through regulating the traffic into those through the adjustment of tolls. I can tell you that that approach is different than the I-66 projects in Virginia, which has gotten certainly a lot of attention with some, at very peak hours for short periods of time, some quite stiff tolls.
This is the nightmare everybody has.
Yes. And I can tell you why we are talking about something different, and that is because I-66 added no capacity. They did not add one additional lane to I-66. During peak hours, it was an HOV ent-. During, during peak hours, it was, it was an HOV entirely HOV highway. So to use it during peak hours, morning and evening, you had to have two people in the car. And what they were in essence tolling was to make all these people that were using it illegally with a single person in their car a means by which they could use it legally. So they were taking a very small amount of capacity and pricing it. And that's why the, that's why the, the, the tolls that, that we've seen make news have made news. For us, obviously, we are adding capacity, we anticipate if we get through the NEPA process and find that, that it's an acceptable approach. Express toll lanes will allow us to add capacity and to control capacity. So I'm, I, I'm quite confident we are not going to see the kinds of tolls that we have seen on I sixty six there. So the, the approach that you see here has been express toll lanes or high occupancy tolling, so it's either ETLs or, or hot lanes, which means that a high occupancy vehicle can drive for free or for a reduced fare, doesn't require free. And it, it gives a number of options as to how those will be operated. We are, we, we will be working with concessionaires as well as listening to the public as far as desires. But what, what do we get out of this is we get, we get the options. We get to upgrade the system because what we're talking about is the reconstruction of the, of the existing general purpose lanes as well. So as we progress, we will have totally new highways. And right now, given the age of four ninety five, we know that that roadway is going to need significant investments. It has reached and in sections exceeded its design life. We know a lot of money needs to be invested into it. We don't have that money programmed. And so the, the idea that says we can get general purpose lanes replaced is quite, quite enticing to us. So it also though reduces the traffic on the local systems. As we've talked about Waze and Google Maps, those local, local communities are experiencing congestion today from the interstate. So if we can move traffic back onto the interstate where it should be and get it out of neighborhoods, it will reduce traffic on arterials as well. I know there's been conversations about, well, what's going to happen to these major arterials when people are going to be wanting to get on and get off? Our estimation conservatively is a two to four percent reduction in traffic on the arterials. If we can get this traffic out of their neighborhoods, that traffic isn't going to be on those arterials. And then the improved job accessibility that, that we can have, it's a significant extension of the boundaries of where people can get within a sixty minute trip to jobs. And you can talk a little bit more about that. But then the other piece in here that seems to get lost a lot is this movement of goods. Freight movement within the National Capital Region is very important, very important. And it's ignored and obviously not supported by transit. So we've got to be able to deal with, with the Amazon trucks that want to get to fulfillment centers and to Walmart trucks. And even, even the trucks that want to get to our, our national security facilities are fighting in that same congestion. So what we are looking at, I'm on page ten, is how we are phasing the program. The first is phase one, and that's the one that we are in discussions with the P three community now. And it's incorporated into the NEPA study that is ongoing. Phase one will start with the American Legion Bridge. So the American Legion Bridge will be, will be addressed within this program and we will start with it. And then that phase one will be on four ninety five that will continue over to I ninety five. Our expectation is that we will have responses to our requests for proposals from industry, that we should receive those in, um, I think, spring of next year. Let me double check. Yes, what time, what, what do you think? March. Okay, spring of next year.
This is the, the responses to the RFP on the two seventy north or the, the Beltway?
So this is on the, this is on phase one,
Gotcha.
which will be design and construction of the express toll lanes on, on the roadway from American Legion Bridge to ninety five.
Right.
So we should receive the responses to the RFP in March. And from those, we will have a very, well, we will have an explicit answer to whether our goals can be met, limiting, limiting impacts, having designs that are innovative, that further limit that, that address whatever the issues are that will be, that will be coming through the NEPA process. We'll, we will know in March of next year, so roughly one year from now, will our approach work? If the answer is yes, that we have gotten responses that are, are acceptable, desirable, at that point, we would begin the, the request for qualifications for phases two A and two B. Two A is I two seventy from the split on up to three seventy. And then two B is, is from ninety five on around to Maryland five. All of this obviously is dependent upon the NEPA study producing, you know, acceptable answers to us that allow us to continue with these projects. But what we would do then is by the end of next year, we would have started the procurement for I two seventy and the most of the remainder of four ninety five. And then after that would be three A, which is the continuation of I two seventy to Frederick. We have to complete the EIS for, for the remainder of two seventy. And then the piece with, with V dot over to the Woodrow Wilson Bridge. So that's, that's the phasing of it, again, aggressive. But we have to be aggressive if we're going to address the problems that are out there that you all in particular get to experience every day. So as we get into the status, I'm going to turn this over. I'm going to let Greg take this forward.
Great. Thank you. I will add that if you, if you're trying to kind of wrap your head around a little more timing and kind of phasing perspective, the current schedule has us focusing on getting that record of decision for that next piece, that I two seventy north in that summer twenty twenty two timeframe. So it's really kind of working concurrently, but working sequentially between our current NEPA study, the construction, and then moving into that next phase of, of NEPA. So let me move forward two slides, a little bit of an overview. The secretary touched on a little bit, but getting into the current study today. The recommended screened alternatives were released, we're down to seven alternatives. Six plus the no build alternative, no build is a baseline in all NEPA projects and is always a viable option as we go through and evaluate impacts and, and benefit. But the six alternatives that are left are a combination of all price managed lanes so that we can meet that financially self-sufficient goal between express toll lanes and high occupancy toll lanes. But also some combinations that allow us to keep the, the high occupancy vehicle lane that's on two seventy today and, and how they can all function together. Public workshops in April and May, so we're going to be starting them again on Thursday. So we're having workshops throughout the month of April as well as into the first week of May. We've added another one on the north side of two seventy. And then we've added one on, in Prince George's County towards Woodrow Wilson a little bit more to really kind of get that cross section of communities. In these community meetings, we're going to really offer community members an opportunity to not only tell us what they think about our screened alternatives, but really kind of give us some feedback on how we move forward. Because we're really, what's important is every time we engage the community, that we weave those thoughts in and, and kind of move forward as we go into the next phase of what we're doing. The initial activities I touched on a little bit will be starting in the spring and we're, we're envisioning that first kind of touch in the public in the summer, this summer. So it'll be, we'll be out there and we'll be looking for your, your help along the way as, as well as being at the table. But at the same time, we always like to reach out and, and making sure we're reaching the community in, in the best way. And if there are community associations, homeowners associations, those types of groups that you think are, are really valuable that we reach out and, and, and interact with along the way, please feel free to share that with us. And then that second piece, that last piece, which is that I four ninety five, Maryland five across Woodrow Wilson, the Virginia Department of Transportation, really, really important. They wanted to focus, make sure that they didn't have any focus taken off of the American Legion Bridge before they looked at the, the south side with Woodrow Wilson. We're very much in line there. So as soon as we get what we're going to do on the American Legion Bridge, then they're going to shift their focus down to the other side because they've got tremendous amount of their managed lane network already implemented, really working on that regional solution. This slide gives you a little bit of a sense of where we are. And, and if you look at that preliminary range of alternatives through the July workshops of last year into that screened alternatives, we're right there at that public workshop. Alternatives retained for detailed studies so that we can get that feedback in this workshop and really go into the real detailed meat of the work over the summer and start getting some, some substance around a lot of the work that we're doing. So it really gives us that opportunity. When you're looking at studies that have ten, fifteen different alternatives, there's only so much detail that you can put into them, but really getting it down to, to those six that really meet the goals of our program, we can really put some detail around them. And then early in twenty twenty, we'll be back out in the community again with a series of public hearings. Formal public hearings as part of our NEPA process as part of our administrative record. In the screening criteria, just a little bit of a sense of how we got to where we are today with the range of fifteen alternatives that we started with. We really developed this screening criteria really at the same time that we developed our, our scoping and purpose and need to understand not only the range of alternatives, but how we would screen them as we go through the process. And first and foremost, very much like our original high level goal, we want to accommodate the existing and long-term traffic growth. We want to make sure that we have, when we're out there with this opportunity, we're not only addressing the congestion that's there today, but, but addressing that long-term traffic growth that we're going to see, not only in passenger vehicles and travel, but also as land use develops and the freight movement in that corridor. We want to enhance that trip reliability. We want to provide an additional roadway travel toy, choice. These managed lanes are not facilities that many people use every day. What we're seeing across the country is you make that choice every day. You're, you're stuck in traffic and you want to catch a little game or you need to get home early on time or you need to get an appointment, that's when you use that. It's very few people that use these facilities every single day. But as traffic backs up and congested conditions continue, it gives you another choice so that you can get to that meeting or you can get to that baseball game or that appointment or, or where you're trying to get to. So it really gives the users another choice. Ease of use for travelers, we want to not only use of the facilities, but it, it access in and out of these types of facilities. So it's convenient. We're really looking at where people are coming from, where they're going to, when they want to be able to access these facilities in that detailed money, modeling. Accommodate homeland security, critically important in this region. Critically important as we start to look at this region and, and the security, being able to, to deal with an emergency situation, not only an emergency situation, but, but critical things like inaugurations and those types of things that we see impacts in the region. Improvement of goods and services. We want to enhance that multimodal connectivity, really. That's where we're coming with that, that looking at the CCT, looking at transit usage in the, in the managed lanes, looking at that connection around the Beltway and it is critically important. Transit area and development, it's a great example of that is Greenbelt Metro where the, where we were looking at the FBI facility at one point. You know, that's the type of a facility that when, when that conversation comes back, we're going to have that infrastructure in place and be able to have that foundation there ready to let that next wave of development come in the region. And then lastly, financially self-sustaining, as the secretary referred to. The resources are just not there, they're spread thin. We spend a tremendous amount of resources just keeping our system up to date today. If we looked at the next ten, twelve years, what we need to invest in two seventy and the Beltway, we're looking at about another one point seven billion dollars investment in that system with no additional capacity added. And that's just keeping the pavement and bridges up. This is going to allow us to take that infrastructure and keep it all in good shape. And we certainly all know, as I'm sure you know, in local government, what happens when you, you don't have enough resources to maintain that existing.
I would just add to that comment, which is the one point seven billion dollars. The only way we could do that is to take the rest of the CTP program from across the state and put it into this. So we know that's not going to happen. So what that means is we're going to see the roadway, you know, continue to deteriorate if we don't have a solution.
Looking at the, the recommended screened alternatives, this is something we mailed out to the public about a month, month and a half ago. This is really the, the structure around our public meetings and looking at what those are and what those impacts are and where they're going to be, but looking at the alternatives. Of course, the no build alternative five is a one lane, high occupancy toll managed network on both two seventy and four ninety five. Alternative eight, which is a two lane express toll lane network on four ninety five and a one lane ETL and maintaining the HOV on two seventy today. Nine is two lane high occupancy toll on both roadways. Ten is a two lane ETL in both roadways plus the one lane HOV on two seventy. So additionally, that HOV would be maintained. Thirteen B is a two lane high occupancy tolling network on four ninety five and a hot reversible network on two seventy. And then thirteen C is a two lane express network on two seventy, on four ninety five. And then an ETL reversible lane network with one HOV continuing to stay on two seventy. So why a P three? I, I think the secretary touched on it a little bit as well. But, you know, essentially, if we look to address this issue on our own, we could look at our entire capital budget to implement this and it still wouldn't be in place until twenty forty five. We just have so many resources coming into us from the trust fund and we just, we're at our limit in terms of what we can issue for debt capacity. So we've looked at everything else. We've seen real success in these P threes across the country and across the globe. Really a, a model that allows us to extract the value that we have in our system to be able to provide some benefit. And Maryland, under Maryland P three, our law allows us to leverage that capital to deliver that funding gap. And, and looking at it programmatically, part of the innovation of what we're trying to achieve is addressing this programmatically by looking at these individual pieces and helping them manage themselves because the value that you see in the transportation network is in the system. It's not just addressing one interchange or one location, it's in the system so that it's all connected. You're looking at the interstate system, American Legion up and across the, the ICC into ninety five and up to seventy and how it gets there. That's how we ensure that that is going to be successful for the state for years to come. Looking at some of the additional benefits, it really gets into that lifecycle cost and optimization. Turning that, that asset over with our standards still in play to the private sector and how it's going to be maintained and managed and operated, the condition of those assets will still maintain that standard as part of our contractual negotiations. Innovation in design, top side of the Beltway is a great example. There's really, really tight spaces up there. We want to use that private sector innovation and say, this is the space that we have. The days of us going back and forth and, and building these, these big wide highways, they're just not there anymore. So how do we fit that space innovatively in those tight spaces that really have developed over the years? And harnessing that private sector innovation by not limiting them with a scope that we've already delivered to them, by giving them that space and saying, bring us your ideas and how are we going to work this out and deliver this solution? And then the risk transfer, traditional risks would be borne to us. Under this type of a scenario, we put a tremendous amount of the risk on the private sector by bringing those solutions. And it's on them to, to, for the growth and, and we get the solutions and the new infrastructure. So, but a P three is not, it's not a funding source. The purple line is, is a P three, but it's what's called an availability payment three, P, P three. So it's essentially, I, I like to say front. So it's essentially, I, I like to say front funding, but that's not always the right case, but it's you're leveraging some debt, paying for something now that we will pay for somewhat later in the process. Privatization, this is not privatization either. It's, we will still own and, and have a stake in this asset. It's just going to be operated and, and maintained by the private sector for the concession term. And then the transfer of state responsibility, state still is going to retain the ultimate responsibility to ensure the facility meets the intent by the public good. When there's a safety issue in the facility, we know the public is going to be looking to us and we're going to be working with everybody to make sure we solve that issue. Private partners also cannot have ultimate decision-making authority in the environmental process, that's on us. They're not involved, although we're running parallel, we're working that as a completely separate process independent of this. So it's really working in parallel so that we can address the issue with the urgency that it needs. That's plain and simple, that pure gridlock is going to be around the corner before you know it.
So Greg gave an overview of, of how we are financing the purple line and I think maybe just a little bit of additional information there might be helpful in that there, there is not, to my knowledge, a transit mode or system that can pay for its own construction and then pay for its operation. It, they, they all require subsidies, fairly large subsidies from someone in order for them to, to be constructed and to operate. The purple line is the perfect example for us here in that it's this five point six billion dollar, thirty-six years. But what, what's actually going on is that the private sector is bringing roughly one billion dollars and the state is bringing a hundred and fifty million. The counties, both Prince George's and Montgomery County have contributed substantial amounts of money into that as well. And then the federal government put nine hundred million dollars into it that does not have to be repaid. The payments though, that have to be made by the state from the time that it starts operations going forward is roughly a hundred and, I think it's like a hundred and forty-nine point three million dollars a year. And that will pay back the, the private sector's investment in the construction of it as well as the difference in the cost to operate it each year from what will not be produced by the fares that are collected. If the fares are less, our availability payment will change. So on the example of the purple line is one, I think it's pretty clear. It requires a large subsidy to construct, it's going to require a large subsidy to operate during the thirty years of P three operation. So it is, it, it's an example, I believe, of, of how P threes are not going to pay for more transit. It, it's a way to finance more transit, but it's not a way to fund more transit. You know, the P three structure, I, I, I really think that it's a very complicated graph and I think the critical piece here is really to understand that, that our arrangements with MDTA are a relationship in which the S H A is going to be an agent of the MDTA in order to have access to tolling authority. MDTA is the only agency in the state that has explicit tolling authority. So there will be an agent agreement between them. S H A that owns the property that these ETLs are going to be built on are going to lease that land to MDTA. And there will be a new trust agreement that will allow MDTA to establish toll rates using state law. They will have to hold hearings, public hearings in order to do that. And then all of the debt that is accumulated for the construction of this, we anticipate there will be public debt in the form of TFIIA loans, which is the, the USDOT form of debt. There probably be private activity bonds authorized for this and all of those are no recourse to the state of Maryland. Those will be debt of the, in all likelihood, it's going to be a joint venture LLC of a group of concessionaires, operators and contractors. But they will be taking on the debt. They will take on the debt of the TFIIA, of TFIIA repayment and PABs. And then they will also have layers of, of other bondholder debt. I think that's important to understand. It sort of opens up this question, well, what happens if they fail? There have been, I'm aware of two toll roads that have failed. There's the Indiana toll road and then there's state highway one thirty outside of, it's in Texas outside of Austin. Both of those failed. They declared bankruptcy. Bondholders stepped in and continued to operate those according to the contract that the state had with the original entity that was, that was operating this. So, so it would be similar. I, I believe we've got, I think we have a, a great deal for, for the P three industry here. I believe we will be able to take advantage of that and, and have a successful project. But in the unlikelihood that it were to fail, the state will not be responsible for any of that debt. Bondholders step in because the only way they get their money back is if the toll road continues to function. That's what happened in other states and in my mind, that's, that, that is explicit evidence as to how these things are good for the public in that if it doesn't work, it's the private sector that's going to have to continue and meet the, the requirements of the bond or of the, of this concession agreement.
Now, the last piece we'll touch on are, are really one of the more exciting things that you'll see, especially in the region are the potential workforce and economic implications of a project like this. When you look at a bit of a success story, look at four ninety-five and ninety-five and express lanes in Virginia, six point three billion in economic activity, seven hundred and seventy-five million of those dollars were disadvantaged businesses, small women-owned businesses, minority contracts. It's huge for the region and, and twenty-eight thousand jobs supported dur- during construction. So you know, the, the story we look at, you look at a story like that and I'm quite certain that there are small and women-owned and minority and disadvantaged, disadvantaged businesses that exist today because they started up during that type of a process and, and really looking at them and, as an opportunity to help not only deliver this, but, but we have our other highway work that is going to continue to develop across the state. So if you look at the program opportunities, you know, of course, at the highest level when you look at the organization chart, you know, the developer, designing, construction, quality management, operations and maintenance, because they're going to have their own teams doing a lot of that as well, design firms. We're going to be looking for opportunities with, with trade contractors, quality management consultings, operations and maintenance contractors, testing labs, design sub consultants. I'm meeting with a number of those. I've actually just recently been asked to, to give a lunchtime talk at the Council on Minority Transportation Officials Lunch in May. So it's really about them all trying to learn about our program and how they can be part of it. So if you look at Opportunity M dot, this is a program that we modeled after a program that Pete had generated in Missouri. They called it the Missouri Model. We want to really take that and really make it our own as we do everything in Maryland, try and make it our own and, and build on it. But we're really looking to, to ways to change the delivery of these construction projects, empowering citizens, economic growth, advisory councils, perverse partner, but really looking at this training partner network. We're going to mentor firms and individuals collaborating with this advisory council, continuing a partnership with Comto, who I just referenced in that referring partners program to raise awareness, also networking community-based organizations, faith-based organizations, high schools, colleges, universities, libraries, local and state agencies. I know when, when the secretary did this in Missouri, it was really impactful for the whole region and really it's the type of program that can change people's lives. When you bring in those mentoring ship programs and, and opportunity programs on a program like this, because this is not just a project, it's a program, you're looking at, at work over a decade to really lay a foundation for what you wanted to achieve. And then this, we're setting up an Opportunity M dot Inclusion Center of Excellence to really support the entire lifecycle of the P three program, start to finish and being able to mentor those firms and startup firms continually. And we'll treat inclusion as a strategic initiative. So we're continuing to bring different and diverse skillsets and individuals into our program so that we can deliver a program for the diverse citizen group that we serve. So as I close out, I, I will say that we need your support as we're trying to make some progress in this region on this important issue. What we need is your voice at the table with us, helping us collaborate and helping us develop the best solution for this region to meet the needs. So thanks for having us here tonight.
Thank you both very much. Appreciate the, the presentation and, and all the tremendous work that it's taken to get to this point. We, in, in Gaithersburg, and I, I think you'll probably get a whole, a bunch of different, whole spectrum of opinions up here, but we in Gaithersburg are in an interesting place in that, in that we have, there is some transit in terms of bus in the city and, and there's, there's some potential planned transit with Quarter Cities Transit Way, which I noticed is, is included in your presentation. We look forward to further discussion on that. And the county has a bus rapid transit plan, but we don't have metro up here. We dream of, you know, we've long dreamt of maybe Mark expanding its service. They're, they're, they have reasons, for whatever reason, they, that doesn't ever seem to expand or go two directions or do what would really be valuable to Gaithersburg. But we have a lot of residents. This is, this is a, you know, the third largest city in Maryland, we're seventy thousand residents. A lot of them are in their cars every day and a lot of them are sitting in traffic every day, including some people here at the, at the dais. We, so that, we understand, we, we all support transit and, and we want, we want it, but we also understand that there needs to be investment in our roads and that, that the current situation is just untenable and it's, and as you pointed out, secretary, it's going to get worse. We've had our colleague Neil Harris talking about how it's going to get worse for, for a couple of years here now, maybe, maybe three years.
He's just a pessimist though. I've seen the data.
So, so we look forward to working with you and being at the table, particularly in this, in this, whatever you're calling the next phase. We have seen some interesting, we, Neil and I saw an interesting proposal recently about monorail, which could potentially, according to the, the presenters, take very little right away and sort of work in concert with, with what you do, investments in roads and, you know, also according to the presenter could potentially be self-sustaining with, with little if no government subsidies. If that unicorn does indeed exist, I hope that you guys would be open to that idea.
Yep, we are, we're prepared to listen. I've, I've heard about the presentation, I've not seen the presentation.
Yeah.
I would very much like to see it. I'm, as you can tell, I probably will enter it skeptically so they, but I, I, I am looking, I love the term to the unicorn. If, if it's out there, I would love to hear about it and, and incorporate that into our transportation system.
Sure.
Looking for shockingly innovative, right?
Yes, they are. We are. And, and you know, obviously we, we have a little, we have some residences if, if, you know, to, we'll see, I guess, soon enough whether the, the shockingly innovative solutions, if, if it's realistic to stay within the footprint of, of what we have south of us and, and on the Beltway. In the city of Gaithersburg, we do have some residences that are, that are close to two seventy and it could be subject to issues with widening, but it's, it's less so than in Rockville where there's significant numbers of single-family homes that are, that are right there. And so we hear a lot of the, the sort of, I don't want to say it's hysteria, but, but very, very concerned citizens about this project and, and who were very active during the election and, and would continue to be. So I appreciate you, you guys making a point of the bullet point, you know, minimizing the impacts. That's, that's important and I guess we can't really know what people would be looking at until we start to see these proposals come in.
That's correct. And, and again, what's going to come out here in a couple of days will be the maximum impact, which is what's being required of us by the federal agencies who are saying, we, we don't know what shockingly innovative is, so you give us, tell us what would happen traditionally. So what we have had to prepare was a, was a map that shows impacts that are what you would see from any normal highway expansion. And that's why I continue to stress that it's worst case, we certainly are expecting less than what, than what will be shown here, but I think people along two seventy will be happy.
Okay. You want to go first, Mike?
Well, sure.
Go ahead.
I have a number of questions, you know, I do believe that new roads do bring new cars and new traffic and new commuters. That's just a fact. I think they also invite development in the, in the outer suburbs as well, not necessarily where, where we have dense development, but people still like suburban living. So I mean, that's a challenge we'd have to deal with regardless. So I'm interested, you know, as I, I think I explained to you before the meeting, that I drive to Bethesda NIH every day down two seventy. I get on at exit ten and I get off at three fifty-five and it's actually the last mile that takes the longest from three fifty-five, down three fifty-five to entrance to the campus. But there, so plopping in new lanes, whether they're ETL or, or hot lanes is one thing, but actually a lot of the congestion down two seventy happens not because the, all the lanes are congested, but because people need to get out of those lanes and into the other arterials. So you get off at twenty-eight, you get off at Shady Grove, you get off at Montrose Parkway and it's people maneuvering to get it, to get out of those hot lanes if they, or the HOV lanes now that actually causes some backup. And when you get past those, then it loosens up again until you get to the next one. So I'm just, so I, and then looking at the configuration and the various alternatives, we talked about adding a managed HOV lane or a hot lane than an ETL. Right now, if I take the stretch from Shady Grove, basically from three seventy down to, to twenty-eight, we've got two local lanes, we've got three general purpose lanes, we have an HOV lane that, that is regulated, I guess it's managed because it goes by peak time. And then if you have the space, you're going to add an ETL and perhaps is the HO, current HOV lane going to become the managed HO, hot lane or is there going to be an addition of two lanes and one of those potentially reversible? That's kind of the question. And then, so once you add those lanes, which I assume are going to be in the center where the median is now between north and south town, where are the exits from those lanes? Where in the, where are the entrances to those lanes? Because that, that I think is actually a pretty significant choke point that adds to a lot of congestion. So that's, that's kind of one question. And then, you know, I think there are some concerns that, that, you know, I haven't heard the term Lexus lane added, added to this discussion in quite a long time. Certainly that was a discussion when the ICC was open that, that, that only certain, only people of certain means are going to be able to take advantage of these things. So in a way, even though we talk about no tax increases and no cost, net cost to the state, we're still talking about net cost to the user of these lanes. And for some people, that's a tax. You might call it a user fee or a toll, but it's, it's something out of their pocket. So how do we keep that, that low and how do we prevent it from becoming an I sixty-six problem as well? So those are kind of, those are some of the issues that I'm, I'm interested in you if you have some answers to specifically, but I think until we see the engineering and the design, especially for the on-ramps and off-ramps to these new lanes, that's a, that's a concern. And then, you know, I was glad to see the CCT part of this plan. I, I'm glad to see that transit would, would be able to take advantage of these lanes as well. But I, you know, I would remind you and everybody else in the room that we actually have four communities that, that we tend to call, we identified long ago as transit oriented communities and developments and they, they certainly. and developments, and they certainly, those residents, I think, to some extent bought in those communities because they believed in that, that that would happen, that transit would come. So.
So I heard at least three questions. Let me see if I can, can deal with those. So when I had talked about us viewing all of this as a system of systems, the, the TRP is actually more than just 270, 495. We have pieces of this over on 695, we have, right now, $50 million of our artificially intelligent traffic signal corridors that are being installed to help move traffic on the arterials. We are going to continue to invest in those as we learn more and more about where they work and where they don't work. So we've actually seen where the investment doesn't pay off for what we're putting in. We've seen other areas where it's a huge return. So we are learning from that as we go. Those would be investments that I think you will continue to see in Montgomery County as well as around the state. We have, we've been talking to Al Rashdi about this for a couple of years now. And so the idea that, that where traffic will get on, get off is gonna be important to all of it. We don't know yet what the designs are going to look like because we don't know where they're going to, you know, where they're gonna put the lanes. The next one, I can't answer the question about where the lanes would be or does it include the hot lane or, or not, because that's part of the, the study that is ongoing for NEPA. So I, the answer could be yes to any one of those until we see the results. I can't, I can't give you an answer there. And even if we choose one, we won't be able to tell you where it's located until we draw proposals back.
Sure.
The last one I heard, there was Lexus lanes and the concept that only wealthy use that. That term has pretty much gone out of use because we have a lot more experience now in the country about who uses these lanes. And, and very few people, as Greg had mentioned, actually use these things every day. They, they use it for their, their purposes. These are lanes that people choose to use, they don't have to use them, but they make decisions like a mother or father trying to get to daycare before they get, you know, a rather large penalty for late pickup of their two kids that could easily pay for their toll many times over. It could be people trying to get to sports games, to see a lacrosse game or whatever, to get to see their, their kids play. It can be someone trying to get to a doctor's appointment so they don't have a late fee or cancellation fee. But there's all kinds of reasons that people will choose to use an express toll lane, and, and most of the time, it's, it's for something that is occurring within their, their life. And so this provides options that, that are not there now and is perceived as, as a positive. And I can't remember if what they said over in Virginia that it's a, I don't remember if it's a Honda or a Toyota is the most, the most frequently used vehicle in, in that lane. So the, the Lexus lane is, is not there. And, and I think one of the things we've demonstrated with the ICC is that there's a lot of people that choose to use that because it just saves so much time. So it, I, I don't, I do not see the, the ETLs and the, as, as we've mentioned, they are being used not just in Virginia, but around the country. And they generally receive a lot of public support, especially after they're open. Were there more questions than that?
No, I, yeah, it was it. You know, I, there, I think there are examples of, of designs, you know, I-66 West has center, center lane on and off ramps to, from the HOV lanes or the, I guess they're, they are hot lanes. So those are different examples, but that always takes, that takes more space. You need more land to do those kinds of things. And so when you, when, if that's part of the design, then I think we're gonna be going back and looking at, at possible loss or increase in, in the right of way, which would end up taking, you know, raising the concerns that have always been, already been expressed about these things. So, I mean, I just meant 270 is the example, but I think, you know, the, the things I've raised would apply the entire stretch from the Woodrow Wilson Bridge to Frederick on, on 270 and, and to the American Legion Bridge as well.
This is not an easy program.
Right.
And again, it's only part of a lot of other things that we are attempting to do to ease congestion to the extent that we can, number one, afford and number two, accomplish.
So just two quick things that I might add that might be helpful. First, I think it's really important to understand the, the shift that you're gonna start to see on 270 this summer with the Innovative Congestion Management Project. So that Innovative Congestion Management Project not only added some technology to the corridor to help manage the capacity, it's shifting the HOV lane to the inside shoulder, and the HOV lane that's there today will be another general purpose lane added to 270. So that's your baseline. And then when we're talking about going out there now with RP3, what's free today will be free tomorrow. So what you see is we're not taking any capacity that's out there today and putting a toll on it. So any toll capacity would be new capacity. And what we've seen across really other experiences on 95 is the free lanes, because of the people that choose to use the toll lanes, 10 to 12 to 15% reduction in congestion in the free lanes just by the people that are choosing to use those toll lanes. So it does give you an additional tool to help manage that.
A general purpose lane that's free today will be free tomorrow.
Ryan?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. And thank you both for the presentation, it's very informative. I appreciate you giving us your time today. Some specific questions that weren't clear to me is, so with this phasing, are you, are you anticipating one vendor or multiple vendors running the system and partnering with the state?
Yes.
Okay.
So it, it's, each phase will be procured separately. So it's conceivable that one would win it all. I, I don't think that's going to happen. I, I think we will see multiple. And so, I mean, there's actually things that make it easier if it were one to, to do it all, but it, it's, I think there's going to be a mix of concessionaires that will have various phases of, of program. But again, it doesn't, that, that doesn't mean that some very aggressive vendor would come in and win it all.
Interesting. And it, it seems to, I guess the devil will be in the details going forward to see what kind of vendors you have come in or concessionaires you have come in, where it seems like a lot of the, or most of the risk is being shifted to them, with little being borne by the state. I mean, are, is the market research bearing out that there are such interested parties out there to partner with?
There, there is. So we have held two industry days. The first one was in December of 17, we had 350 people show up for it. We had another one in December of 18 and we had 550. We had to limit attendance because it exceeded the, the goal that the fire marshal had set on the room. 550. We followed that up through invitations and responses to the opportunity. Immediately following the industry day, we had one-hour sessions with various concessionaires. So we had, we had 17 one-hour meetings with concessionaires, talked through these issues, explained that this is a revenue at risk P3, that they're going to have to come up with the resources, no net, you know, that it was going to be a net zero cost to the state and that we anticipated there would be concession fees. And no one got up and left.
Um, let's see. So, so as the mayor mentioned, the concerns over the impacts of, I guess, the takings of property that would potentially result from the, from this project at various phases, you know, so obviously I'm concerned about our residents and their takings, any take, potential taking of property, I'd be against that. I'm also concerned about neighbors to the south, and I, I would expect that we would look to mitigate the, the potential for that and any planning going forward. That's more of a comment than a question. Um, let's see. Yeah, so in general, I'm, I'm, I'm all in on all modes of transportation to mitigate the impacts going forward, you know, as development grows, more people come, more people travel, they get on our roads, they get on whatever it is that gets them to where they wanna be. Recognize it as being a necessary evil kind of, people driving their cars. I also recognize that my commute doesn't get better until you get your car off the road. But I do support mixed mode transit. So I did like the fact that you, you, you put into this presentation discussions of how these projects could be integrated with other modes of transportation. A big one the mayor mentioned is the, you know, when I'm not driving to Crystal City, as we talked about before, I'm usually taking the Mark train down to downtown. I would love more options there. I understand there's some, some issues with the, the owner of that property, but to the extent that we can work through those in the future, I think that would be a great And, and I guess the last point I have is noise mitigation at Watkins Mill interchange. I would love a hedgerow of some kind to mitigate the noise impacts to the extent possible on, on the project. Thank you.
Neil?
Okay, well, thank you for the presentation. By the way, he lives near the Watkins Mill interchange. I didn't pick that up already.
I live on the train side, though, so I can hear the trains go.
So anyway, thanks for the presentation and thanks for the amazing, immense amount of work that's gone into this already. I know that you've gotten a lot of pushback and, you know, I, clearly something needs to be done. My interest in transportation came about not because I'm a professional transportation engineer, 'cause I'm not, but I was commuting from Gaithersburg to Reston, Virginia for a while, and I usually hear groans from the audience when I bring that up because it's the world's most horrible commute. It doesn't matter how good the job is or how much it pays, it's not worth it because of the, the amount of traffic that you have to deal with, especially coming home on a Friday night at rush hour. So something needs to be done. Now, I moved to this area in late 1988, and very shortly thereafter, 270 was, was widened considerably, and it was free-flowing for a few years and then not so free-flowing for more years. So one question I have is will the studies give us some idea of how much capacity we're buying and how long we're likely to have a reasonably free flow of traffic? And are we gonna wait another 35 years to do more, or is there some incremental plan for how we're gonna continue to make improvements?
So federal highways actually cites priced managed lanes as the way to maintain flowing traffic on lanes. And so the difference between what we will be looking at and if we get successfully through the NEPA process would be undertaken is price managed lanes are, are such that if, if there's too much traffic trying to enter it, you change the price until you can maintain a speed limit of, let's say, 45 miles an hour. And as speed limits pick up, then you reduce the, the toll. And so that is why I can tell you that these lanes will not choke on traffic the way other construction has within this region. That is a tool that is cited by federal highways as an effective way to keep, you know, keep traffic moving. And so I, we won't have to wait 35 years. I think that there will be technology solutions that are also going to, over a 50-year period, which is what we are anticipating a, a concession agreement would be for, that we're going to see a lot of progress in technologies that will allow more cars to flow on existing infrastructure. So we're, we're at an exciting time from, from transportation. More is occurring right now than probably has happened in 100 years. So I, I, I think we are at the, the leading edge of a better life if we can put in place what's necessary to achieve that.
Great, thank you. So also, as part of your, the plan that was put in place already for 270, I've noticed that some of the lanes have been restripped so that there's now extra lanes in the southern part of 270. Aside from the slight bumpiness of the road now, it seems to be making an improvement. Do you have some measurements now on what impact it's actually had?
We do, and, and I assume you're referring to that first section that we did down past 190 and really kind of where we had a lane drop and then it kind of broke open again, where we really restripped that. But what we've seen is much less of a queue there, so we're looking at the speed data, probably saw about a 10 to 15% improvement in that corridor. But what we're gonna see in the large improvement, so the models with, with the collection of improvements, were showing a 30-minute reduction in travel time from Frederick down to the American Legion. So that one was one of the biggest ones. We also have some technology on the ramps, but adding that extra capacity. So you're gonna see that, that first piece because it was really easy to implement and people could feel that right away, but then the rest of it, you're gonna see as a collective improvement over the summer.
You said American Legion. Did you mean the Beltway?
No.
You actually said American Legion?
Frederick, 30-minute reduced?
Or the Beltway, yes, I'm sorry. But we striped it from, okay.
Right, so the 30-minute improvement was to the Beltway.
To the Beltway.
To the Beltway. Yeah, and I mean, thinking about it, all you did was change the, some paint on the road. You didn't have to do any major construction, no widening, no anything, and.
Shockingly innovative.
Shockingly innovative. And by the way, I saw a presentation at a recent gathering of the, at the SMTA, the local transportation advocacy group, that, from some P3 providers who are certainly chomping at the bit for this project, but they showed us some of the shockingly innovative things they did elsewhere, including in Texas where there's a road where they actually went down and developed some lanes underground, but there, it's not in a tunnel, there, you can actually see it from, from an airplane, I guess, up above, or from the traffic going by, so.
Canter levered. Yeah, so they canter, canter lever the existing roadway out over the, the new lanes that they constructed, but it's open, so they don't have a tunnel, they don't have all the issues of a tunnel.
It'll be jank.
Right, so it, I mean, just looking at that, it looked like you don't need any extra right of way, you just, you know, need the mining rights or whatever in order to go down. So I think there are, you know, likely to be opportunities. That's, looks expensive, but, you know, these private companies seem to think they, they have all sorts of ways to make things work, so I'll look forward to seeing what, what they come back with at, at that point. You know, I'd like to make a point, follow up on something that Mike said regarding, I, I think it was Mike, regarding transit-oriented development. And, you know, transit-oriented development is important, and we certainly are doing transit-oriented developing here, but it's not the ultimate answer, given that still half the people who are in a transit-oriented development get in their cars to get somewhere. I mean, if half of the people take transit, that's a big, big win, but more than half would be kind of a world's record for any kind of transit-oriented development. So, you know, we need to, we need to get people moving in cars as well as everything Let's see. Yeah, user fees, I just wanted to comment on that as well. In terms of paying a toll, I mean, basically, what, the old way of building roads is the state borrows a bunch of money and then pays for it over time, and everybody shares the, the expense and the pain of paying for that road out of our tax dollars. And in this case, what we're doing instead is basically borrowing money from the private sector, not actually borrowing, but letting them fund it, and then the people who are using that capacity are paying for it, so the rest of us aren't. So, you know, on the one hand, you're paying extra money of, of the, of the price to a bank for the, or whoever's lending you the money, and in this case, you're paying a little extra money in terms of profit to the provider. So to me, kind of seems the same, more or less, except that the burden is focused more on the people that are actually making use of it. So it, you know, thinking it through, it just seems like a more innovative way to do it without destroying the state's bond rating, which is, I mean, as we were talking before the meeting began, I just, I agree with you, I don't think there's any money out there to do more of this stuff. So we've, being creative is great, and I appreciate the fact that you've done that. And, you know, the, the last point I'll make is this is a multi-billion dollar investment in the future of this, of the state and, and this region, and I, I don't see us making that many investments, so we're just busy trying to pay for what we've got today. We want the, you know, the region is going to grow, and there's gonna be hundreds of thousands of people more living in Montgomery County alone, let alone the whole DC metro region over the next 20 years. We've gotta find a place to put them, for them to live, for them to work, and for them to get from where they live and work and shop and everything else. So I, I commend you for, you know, the innovative work you've done going forward and look forward to seeing how it works out.
Thank you.
Ryan?
Thank you. I promised my eight-year-old son that I would pitch you his idea for flying hover cars.
They are coming.
Maybe, maybe we'll just talk about that offline. Joking aside, I really wanna thank you both for being here tonight. I wanna thank you for the details of the presentation and in general for your partnership and your. and your agency's partnerships with the city of Gaithersburg and other communities. In recent years, obviously, we're all very, very excited about the Watkins Mill Interchange and I'd be remiss if I didn't take a moment to thank you again for that. And I'm also the, the incoming president of the Maryland Municipal League. So thank you for your partnership in working towards getting highway user revenues returned to almost their full levels pre-recession last year in the twenty eighteen session. Thank you all for supporting that. Also, Secretary Ron, I wanted to follow up on your mention of intelligent dynamic signalization systems. You mentioned that in some other parts of the state, those are being rolled out and tested. I tend to be a big believer in that technology. We haven't really seen much of it yet in Montgomery County, but I just, I have a hard time not believing that it would be very useful on a road like Route three fifty-five. So, you know, while that's not the direct topic of our discussion tonight, you know, a lot of what you talked about in terms of having traffic be rerouted onto side roads and other arterials because of the fact that two seventy and four ninety-five are so congested, just sort of leads me to think more about that. And I hope we can continue that conversation, how to invest more in that kind of technology here because I, I do really genuinely believe that's a good return on investment, particularly in places where there are a lot of traffic lights close together on large arterials. But in terms of the, the program being discussed tonight, I wonder, I mean, there's already been a lot of questions about the way it would work from a technical perspective, but I wonder if you could talk just a little bit in more detail from a funding perspective, what exactly a federal role might look like in a project like this? Because we talked about the Purple Line earlier, that's also a P three, obviously. But in that case, you're talking about a significant, direct federal grant essentially of the nine hundred million dollars. I don't know if that was under New Starts or another.
It was.
Another transit program. In this case, we're talking about a revenue at risk P three. And it's sort of just not a hundred percent clear to me what, what role in terms of funding or financing the federal government might play in a project like this one, where you're not really talking about a traditional transit project, although there are some aspects of transit. If we're going to have buses, for example, riding on the, you know, on the, on the ETF lanes or, or however we envision that happening. And, you know, I understand how TFIIA loans work, it's just not clear to me, is that something that's going to be in play here? So maybe you all could talk a little bit about what exactly the federal role in financing a project like this might be, bearing in mind that we might not have gotten to the point yet where we know for certain what it's going to look like.
Sure. So the, the pieces of financing in this and the cash flow is that we are having to prime the pump as MDOT by initially funding those activities of consultants and advisors. Those are legal advisors, both for the creation of the contract documents and also for NEPA. We have a financial advisor to advise us on who gets what risk. And then we have a general engineering consultant that is involved in providing enough information to the concessionaire's slash developer. And, and so we are paying for that upfront. With phase one, we are expecting a concession fee at the time of financial close that will reimburse us for that and then we will stay even from that point on. So we're priming the pump with, with our money that we anticipate getting repaid. The next piece of the P three project is the developer portion. And the developer is the one, different than a concessionaire, they can be the same or they can be different. The developer is the one that is looking for the work. They're the ones that are traveling around the world, identifying projects that they want to put their twenty to forty million dollars at risk to be the successful proposer on a, on a program like this or a, or a phase like this, so a project. So the developer then will put together the concessionaire, which will be the long-term entity that's going to bring the big dollars into the, the program, as well as the partnership with contractors and operators and vendors and such. And so the developer puts their money at risk. If they're successful, they will charge a, they will charge their consortium a, a success fee in which they will earn back their money plus. The concession team then comes in and designs the project, builds it and such. They will be doing that by bringing in equity. So typically, ten percent, maybe twenty percent as much will be considered equity and which then very specific investors in the project are putting their equity at risk. And if the deal goes south after they've gotten it, they lose their equity. Their equity is also what will guarantee the, the borrowing that they're going to have to do. So they will put together a funding package for the project by applying to TFIIA. And we will assist in that. We will be working with TFIIA to help the, the proposer to, to receive or the successful proposer to receive a, a commitment of funding out of TFIIA, which is a USDOT funding source that provides very patient, low, low interest rate funds that will, that go into the project. And then PABS, Private Activity Bonds, is where they can be granted a portion of private bonds that are treated as, that are treated as public bonds so that they get a tax-free treatment. And then they have to go to the, to the market to find other, other bond holders that are willing to invest. And that typically will be things like pension plans. Those pension plans can be in Australia, Germany, or it can be a union, you know, a US Union Pension Fund, teachers' pension funds, those sorts of things are always looking for these sorts of investments because they're very long-term, they're fifty years and they're, they're quite secure. So they, they cobble together all of these funding mechanisms that are then drawn upon to pay for the construction as it's undertaken, starting with design, I'm sorry. So they start with, they have to pay for the design and that might be from someone they procure or it might be someone that's on their joint venture team. They will pay for the design, permitting and all those things. They will start construction and it will all come out of this pot of funding that has been assembled. The, the actual concessionaire will typically have to wait ten years before they can start drawing any money out of this deal because they, they have to build it first before there's any revenue. So let's just assume five years for that. Let's assume five years to pay off TFIIA. TFIIA does not allow dividends paid to the concessionaire until TFIIA is paid off. So that concessionaire is putting money into a deal that they know they're going to get no return on for ten years. So they definitely have a long view on, on these projects. But in the end, their, their approach, they have to be very confident that they're going to make their money back over a long period of time, plus stints, plus winters. So no one enters into a P three of this sort lightly.
Thank you.
So I would suggest have your son go to the internet and look for Terra Fuego.
Terra Fuego.
It's a company located in Massachusetts that was recently purchased by Geely, the Chinese auto manufacturer. And they are about to release a flying car.
Uh-oh.
Excellent.
That's shockingly innovative.
Flying.
That's shockingly innovative, I would say.
That is, so it is a real thing.
And with that, we'll come flying car driving schools, you know, so that's, that's inevitable.
So have a look at that.
Do we have any, anybody from the public who'd like to speak, ask questions? Going once, going twice, okay. Not seeing any more questions from up here. We are, we, we, we thank you very much. And once again, we look forward to our partnership and, on the next phase of this. I'm glad Ryan got to, to thank you guys once again for Watkins Mill Interchange and for your partnership in general. We have some, some other sort of smaller things cooking with, with SHA that we're very excited about here. And so Greg will be, will be in touch shortly. Thank you guys so much for, for giving us the time and making the trip out here.
Well, thank you for allowing us to have this time. And I was watching a couple of you during this and I could tell it's been a long day for you two. And I appreciate the attention that you have given and the support that we've asked for. We, we absolutely understand, we're not asking for a rubber stamp. We want you to represent your constituents, help us come up with ways to overcome obstacles. And we can take care of this problem.
Yep, let's work together and, and make it the best we can. So again, please join us next week for the regular meeting of mayor and city council. But a reminder that our budget, public hearings will be on, are moved to the twenty-second. And, and so until next time, let's do great things Gaithersburg, we are adjourned.